The time is, well, the date is October 3rd, 2023, and the time is 6:34 PM. I am going to open the meeting. For those attending tonight's meeting, you should be aware that the meeting is being audio and video recorded by APAC and ASRSD. Any audience members who wish to record any part of the meeting must inform the chairperson, who will announce the recording. This is to comply with the Massachusetts Fair Tap statute. The listings of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Can we do roll call?
Mr. President, Mrs. Menard.
Here.
Mr. Quinsey.
Here.
Mrs. Vichu.
Here.
Mr. Ruprecht.
Here.
Ms. Stan.
Here.
All right, let's do the pledge. I get confused.
Couple choices.
Reporting in progress.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. Public participation. Do we have anybody online?
No.
No? We have nobody here. I'll give it 10 seconds. I'm gonna move on to the consent agenda. So, we are completing the vote for our warrants that we have reviewed in our school committee folder online prior to now. We also have them listed in our agenda. And we are saving money right now, and I am grateful for it. All right. Okay. All right, so we're also entertaining the vote as well for our minutes for release for September 20th, 2023. We have two executive sessions as well, which were Tuesday, May 4th, 2023, and Tuesday, June 6th, of 2023. Does anybody have anything that they would like to discuss in relation to our regular session minutes, our executive session minutes, or our warrants? No? Okay, so I will entertain a motion.
Chair, I don't think we can do it because I wasn't here.
Okay.
I'd make a motion that we approve the regular session minutes from September 20th, executive session minutes from May 4th and June 6th, and the account payable and payroll warrants listed on our agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Awesome. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will move forward. All right, we're gonna go right on to new business. And we're gonna start with our Spring 2023 MCAS Accountability Presentation by Mr. Kehary. Take it away.
Thank you. We have a justice case plan. Case of the year, I think, doesn't work. So we wanted to take, so over the next two meetings, you're gonna hear from each of the school principals and assistant principals about their school improvement plans for the 2023-24 school year. And so traditionally, I will provide kind of an overview presentation of MCAS data, so that will at least make a connection to the school improvement plans that are existing. That way, it doesn't go into too deep of an analysis of the information, so the focus could be more on the goals of the school improvement plan and less about the details within the data. So, I have a few slides. We used, I felt like the presentation that we had last year, which provided kind of a 10,000-foot view of MCAS information, provided just enough to keep people informed about what the trends are in the information and open up some opportunity for some time and didn't give people that glazed-over expression that often happens when we go into a data presentation. So, I wanted to share a little bit about 23 MCAS information. So, last year, it was Next Generation MCAS for all of our grades and all of our subjects, grades 3 through 10. Computer-based testing happened for every student in the district with the exception of those that had accommodations that required them to take it in paper. And accountability reports, which were not really in existence in their full entirety over the past several years due to COVID, are back. And so, the comparison has been made to 2022. So accountability calculations are determined based on a 40%, 60% weighting process. So 40% is based on the scores from 2022, and 60% is based on the scores from 23. The accountability reports that we have been looking at, they contain all of the information, indicator targets, progress ratings, and basically a big comparison to what our COVID baseline was. One piece to note is that the lowest performing students, which is a determination for the accountability process for our high school students for our 10th grade, was not determined, was not calculated this year for any school across the Commonwealth. That will be factored in next year. So, we start with a bit of a snapshot into ELA. So I'm focused on the proficiency ratings that are here. So this is a collection of all of the performance of ELA performance across the district, grades 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 10. Those are all the grades that are tested for ELA. And this is a combination of all of the information. What you can see from this is that our ELA performance has remained reasonably steady. We're still above the state average and heading in the direction that we would like to be heading, genuinely northeast, trying to return to our COVID baseline time and then get beyond that. That's the goal. So across the board, we had reasonable increases. I'm not gonna go into each of the specifics about grade levels in schools and specifics, but general trend is ELA is moving in the northeast direction. So we're looking for. When we look at math, our math performance has remained reasonably consistent from last year to this year. And so, looking at this information, we're staying at, based on proficiency, at the state average. So we're obviously looking to continue to improve on this. But if you remember, last year, we focused on that dip that happened in 2021 because math was impacted a little bit more significantly than ELA due to the COVID shutdown and so on. And so what we saw during that time is that our return, we were looking for a return to normal, return to baseline. So you can see, if you compare 2018 and 2019, you see where our curve was a little bit higher over there versus where it is in 22, 23 is a little bit lower. So that is consistent. If you look at the state average, that's pretty consistent across the state, too. So we're mirroring the state. Yes, Joyce?
Yeah. Sure. So the question there is, so that's, the peak there was two, I can't see this, so, peak there was 2019 or 18?
19.
19. And so you're seeing that pretty much across the state. Are they laying that in anybody's reasoning or door that why are we seeing that? Why aren't people coming, why hasn't, hasn't the math come up?
People haven't identified a specific reason for that.
It must be a COVID.
Yep.
Leftover, but has anybody made an analysis of it?
Not a specific one that would indicate here's the exact reason why this is happening. But the reality is, is that most of the COVID time period impacted our students with a lot of their foundational skills, and I'll say that for literacy and for math. Given the nature of mathematics and that it's sequential, by and large, in terms of kids learning a strategy and a practice and a skill, and then developing that along, a progression over time.
Be usable.
They miss out on some things. So filling those holes takes a little bit more time. So the mathematics recovery is taking a little bit longer across the state than the ELA recovery. ELA recovery, the standards in ELA, they get growing, they increase in complexity, but the nature of those standards is reasonably the same. You're looking at evidence from text and basically forming an argument, depending on what that looks like. It's increasing complexity from grade 3 to grade 10, but the reality is the practice, the skill, is still for the most part the same. So you'll see some of the concerns that they had had, which I'll share in a little bit. Let me get through some of the other slides.
I mean, when you said it was across the state, then you start wondering like, where, at what door are they laying that?
Well, the other thing to remember, too, is ELA is used and practiced through all other subjects, and math really isn't, right? So there's a lot more opportunity to read and use reading strategies in all subjects where math, though we should, we should do that as much as we can, it is more of a standalone to math and science and not quite as linked in to ELA and social studies as probably as much as it should be. But that, I'm not saying that is the exact reason, but that certainly is one of them.
You know, you have to say, since ELA didn't came back a little bit more, you just say, well, what do we need to do? Obviously, it's a statewide thing. It's probably a nationwide thing if we knew, if we had any equal evaluations. So you start saying, well, how do we fix this?
If I may, if I can just ask that, because I have a number of slides in here, I think seven or so slides.
I was just about to say the same thing.
And toward the end, there's a next steps and a section that says like, what we're gonna do with this information and what some analysis looks like.
Just when you get to that, I forget my questions.
I get that. So, but I think the challenge is for me, as I'm presenting it, I sometimes forget like the points that I'm trying to emphasize to lead up to answering the question. So I'm trying to answer the questions ahead of time. So I'll definitely come back, Joyce, if you have one. I will definitely come back to that.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, Charlie, just before you start. So as like a general practice, I'd like to let our presenters present through their entire material because they've been, you know, trying to get this together and then we can ask our questions at the end. And I totally get what you mean by that, Joyce, but I just wanna make sure that they're able to present all the information that they're putting forward since they put the time and effort into this. Go ahead, Charlie.
So, in science, technology, and engineering, you'll see that we, there's a decrease from last year to this year. Where, there's a lot of analysis that's going on now regarding this. I mean, the short answer for this in terms of explanation is we focused a lot on high-quality instructional heroes instructional practices and time that focuses on ELA and mathematics. We haven't spent as much time in science and technology. Nonetheless, we've still maintained kind of a gain above the state average. When we look at this in more detail, we can see some, you can't see it here, but we've already started looking at this to figure out some of the root causes for some of this and then figured out how to address that. Ultimately, as you'll see in the next slide. So when we look overall at accountability, so this is one of the big things. We shared this last year in terms of our accountability values. So in 2022, we were trying to return to kind of this baseline of being at 50 or better. And so that's more or less where we end up in 2022. Moving into 2023, we're hoping to increase on that. We did increase on that. Number of our schools increased in their accountabilities. Laura White went up to 53. Middle school and high school remained reasonably constant. There's some explanation for the high school value that's there. And I'll share that in another slide. Page Hilltop had a bit of a dip, but still maintaining pretty significant high accountability ratings. So we're in average, if not higher average in terms of our accountability in the district. So when we look at some of the information around accountability, we look at big picture things. And so some of those are commonly percentile rankings, those numbers you just saw, remain reasonably consistent from last year to this year. The growth percentiles in each of the categories for our students and their performance in each of the subject areas were typical. In other words, they were having average growth. Some were having high growth, some were having low growth, but staying within the average growth range. We still have some achievement and/or growth gaps that exist for some of our students in marginalized groups, such as our students with high needs, our students with disabilities, and our students who are in low-income families. We notice clearly that our achievement levels continue to need to improve. That's a big focus for us, and you'll see that in the next slide. And one piece that we also took is that our English language arts scores in general across the district in each of the grade levels in each of the schools improved more significantly than our scores did in math and in science. When we look at some of our strengths, again, ELA achievement and growth, because those two scores are the ones that factor in how well you perform on the test, in other words, what grade you earn, but then also how did you perform from one year to the next relative to your previous performance. So we're still continuing to see higher growth in ELA. We're seeing higher achievement in ELA. We saw math improvement in both achievement and growth from grades K to 8. So we spent a lot of time focused on those areas, focused on our implementation of Eureka Math, focused on the support in our classrooms for that. So it's starting to pay dividends. We're seeing some of those changes, which is what we're hoping for, expecting. We also had a significant focus over the year on chronic absenteeism. In other words, trying to get students to school. That worked. It gave us a lot of accountability points. So in each of our, in each of our schools, we earned a lot of accountability points towards reducing our levels of chronic absenteeism. I had mentioned before, we had typical growth. And also, as I said at the beginning, our lowest performing, so in order to calculate accountability, it takes into account all of your students, and that's worth 50% of your accountability score. And then your lowest performing, I put those numbers in, I put those words in quotes, your lowest performing students count for the other 50%. The lowest performing students are those students who are identified in the bottom 25%. So no matter where they're performing, there's always going to be a ranking of all of your students in the district, and the bottom 25 are gonna get considered your lowest performing. That factors into 50% of your accountability scores. We made tremendous gains with our lowest, our lowest quote-unquote performing groups of students. And that contributed significantly to our accountability scores, maintaining some consistency. We did notice some weaknesses. So math and science achievement, we already talked about. We noticed that our EL proficiency had declined, so we have to pay a little bit more attention there and focus our energies on that. Our dropout rate, so a dropout rate and graduation rate is always lagging. It's a year behind the data that's in here. So this is focused on 2023 in terms of MCAS presentation, but the graduation rate and dropout rate is from 2022, which is reflected for a year prior to that. So we're expecting that our dropout rate is going to decline. Our graduation rate is going to increase going into the next year's accountability based on our 2023 numbers, so we already know that. Advanced coursework. We didn't earn as many points as our advanced coursework as we should have. We noticed that our transition from Reddicker into Power School changed some of the coding information that was for some of our courses. So we added a number of courses, Project Lead the Way courses, Advanced Placement courses. And so as a result, because of that coding change, it didn't get factored into accountability in a positive way for us. So as we go into next year, it will be. And so then the high school's accountability score will shoot up next year significantly. 3 through 12, when we look at like specific areas of focus in grades 3, 3 to 10, we're focused on in mathematics that the area of geometry and functions and measurement seem to be areas that come up as consistently. And largely, it's because of the curricular sequence that exists in each of those, in each of our math courses, that geometry is often addressed at the end of the year. Measurement is addressed at the end of the year. Function seems to be something that has been a bit of a challenge in our integrated math sequence, which is part of the reason why we changed our math sequence to go more traditional with algebra, geometry, and Algebra II. So when we take some of the next steps, we obviously have to do some more analysis, and this is work that's been ongoing. That's been taking place with the building admin. You'll hear about some of their findings as part of their school improvement plan. And some of the work that's already underway with teachers developing their own individual goals and/or team goals that'll be around areas of performance based on MCAS. We'll be doing some of this work with our curriculum leaders as well. We still have district goals, which Dr. Reddick had highlighted last June, and then also as part of his superintendent's evaluation report talking about progress. Those goals are still focused and still an area of focus for us. Tiered Systems of Social Emotional Support, focusing on co-teaching to address some of our high-needs groups of students, and also a focus on equity, building that feeling and connection of belonging, and also focusing our, and extending this to focus on grade-level standards and grade-level instruction, which is a big push that's taking place in all of our schools now. Those goal areas will be reflected in the school improvement plan. Some of this work, prior to the release of all this, we had already adopted high-quality instructional materials in literacy. We had already partnered with a high-quality instructional materials partner, The Hill for Literacy, to kind of support our staff in implementing a new literacy program for grades 3 through 5 as well as grades 6 through 8. We also partnered with a math consultant, which teachers are absolutely in love with and are thrilled with the work that's happening. So the summer, there was a great deal of work that happened with curriculum around mathematics to change the sequence, to address some of these concerns that were referenced in this presentation already, and also focus on deeper levels of math understanding within the classrooms. We're also focused on professional development. We have, we've maintained a structure of coaching in literacy and in math. Math is with an outside provider. And we have an innovation/universal design for learning coach that's gonna help with accessibility for our students to access some of the content in the classrooms. Professional collaboration is a big piece that we tend to focus on. In each of our buildings, we continue to try to work with schedules to provide common planning time for folks. When we can't, we put those into our early release days for those Wednesdays. We try to put common planning time there. And we use our curriculum meeting time for some of that work as well to advance some of these initiatives moving forward. And the big piece is time. It's the variable, it's the one variable that we can to some extent control because we can schedule what we do with our time to make it more effective. And so thinking about our early release time, our curriculum meeting time, and our faculty meeting time as areas for focus to improve this. So that's 10,000-foot view of kind of MCAS presenting, MCAS information, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone? Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah. Well, one comment, one question. One, I was buoyed to see the work that was done with the lowest performing groups. You know, when you walk into a classroom, that's kind of who you have to teach to, right? You're too fast, it just slows it down. The gap gets larger, you never get it closed. At least be able to do a better job of getting people to a place where they can help themselves a little bit more and upgrade what you're actually trying to cover within the classroom. So I was happy to see the focus there. Could you just very briefly, way over the top, talk a little bit about how the math professional development works? What the access was for different teachers' grades? What the structure of that looked like? And if there's like post-guidance resource contact with who you contracted with?
So you wanna hear about last year, this year, both?
Bring it.
Okay. So last year, the structure was we partnered with with Leslie University, their Achievement Institute in Mathematics. We had worked with them for the past several years, three or four years, for the implementation of Eureka Math. The structure was largely that we had two separate coaches that were, one was assigned to one building and one was assigned to another building. They came in on a monthly basis. I think they were in for once a month, which was some sort of combination of common planning time. They would come in, and it also was in the middle school. They would come in, do a planning session with a teacher, and they would co-facilitate that lesson or the teacher would facilitate that lesson the next day or the day after. And then there would be feedback exchanged between the coach and the teacher. So that was considered a coaching cycle. So we had coaching cycles available for all of our staff. It wasn't mandatory that everybody does multiple sessions. We were, our goal was to get every teacher through at a minimum one, and then folks would sign up for more. What we noticed is that teachers were asking for, as I was listening to feedback as we went through the coaching process, teachers were asking for more modeling. They were asking for more opportunities to kind of get deeper professional development and understanding the content and not so much necessarily understanding the how-to-teach-it part. They wanted to see how mathematical understanding developed. And so, listening to a lot of these teachers over the span of the year and the past couple of years, and speaking to some of my curriculum leaders about some of the other changes that they were looking for because we were having trouble with curriculum ultimately, like really getting organized in the curriculum in the way that we wanted it to meet all the needs that we had. And so, I made the decision to make a change, to bring in a different consultant to help support the coaching that was taking place in the building. And that started in June. After consulting with the curriculum leaders from mathematics from K to 8, we spent a lot of time talking through what people needed. And I found someone whom I knew that our staff would really trust and connect with and would actually support the questions that they had. And so that started in June with a meeting of 20 or so teachers from every grade, including special education, and that was from K through 8. And the focus of that work was on redefining our scope and sequence in curriculum because we weren't clear about what kind of our core standards we wanted everyone to get. So we had teachers developing these things we call ins and outs. What do kids absolutely need to know when they go into first grade? What do they need to know when they come out of first grade? Defining that for each of the grade levels. That was the start. And then the next part of that has been professional development and coaching. So Allison Mello has already been on site four days, I think, in the district. I think I have 20 more days with her this year, largely through the support of a mathematics grant through the state. And that work has been ongoing. She's gonna be here next week, I think, for Page Hilltop. Page Hilltop doesn't have the schedule yet, but, and that part of that will be planning, individual meetings, co-teaching, modeling lessons, essentially whatever you need. And then in the afternoon, she's gonna run a professional development session for the middle school staff on use of manipulatives to build deeper understanding in mathematics in middle school. So it's different. It's a little bit more in tune with the needs and the requests of the teachers. Sure.
Anyone else? No? Yeah?
When do you expect to see results? How are you measuring?
Well, my...
We are measuring the kids.
Right. So first, like, simple measurement is coming out of the meeting in June. We had a scope and sequence for the curriculum for each of the grade levels developed. And that was shared with all the teachers on the first day of school. They're all following that scope and sequence. That was one. Number two, which is not something that we had in the past. Number two, we had a kickoff meeting where I had 100 teachers and paraprofessionals with Allison on the first day of school, where it was, I don't know, 85 degrees that day, I think.
It was a tough one.
And we're in the Cultural Arts Center. And there was a PD session that people didn't want to leave, and that was after two and a half hours. I had teachers in that meeting that literally came up to me after fighting with me for three years and saying, with me for three years and saying, "Thank you for listening. I'm going to sign up with her immediately." And I was like, "Awesome." So that's, so in terms of measuring progress, that's a huge step forward. Then seeing the changes in classrooms. So I've already been in several mathematic classrooms in two of the buildings. I have to spend a little bit more time at Page Hilltop. But already in one day, walking through, literally one day, I took pictures in three different classrooms of the use of manipulatives, or kids in small groups, or kids working in on particular problems that were linked. And then going into a couple of other classrooms at the middle school to see algebra tiles being used, big visual graphs that are being done, kids going into deeper understanding of stuff. That's like dipsticking for me above progress. That's not something that I've seen in the classrooms on a consistent basis. So now it's becoming a little bit more pervasive. So the next step in that is like looking at assessment information that we'll look at periodically throughout the year, and then put that into the collaboration time that teachers have. Long answer to a short question, but it's a big question.
Big question.
Yeah.
Awesome. Anyone else? No? Thank you, Charlie, so much. I appreciate the presentation.
No problem.
Okay. We will move on to, we're going to have an introduction to Mr. Mike Pelizzi, and that will be by Mr. Fred Deppi.
Thank you all. I appreciate this opportunity to introduce Mike as Page Hilltop Assistant Principal. Mike's been with us for fourteen years now, teaching third, fourth, and fifth grade, mainly fifth. Just a phenomenal person with a lot of energy, a lot of care. I mean, Mike epitomizes one of the people that I follow. Rita Pearson, the legendary Texas educator who passed away, but she always had that quote, "Every child serves a champion," somebody who will always stand by the kids and stand behind them, support them so they can be successful. Perhaps Mike is, that's one of his strengths, is connecting with kids around the communities. Got the same passion for educating kids that I have. He's got the same love of the school district, and he's got the same energy. So we're going to be great team, and I'm looking forward to it.
Awesome.
He's also got, you know, two hundred rubber ducks in him. He's got a collection of rubber ducks, about two hundred.
Well, they're donated by students. I'm just thrilled to be here and for the opportunity. And I've been in the classroom for thirty-three years. It's nice to continue education in a different part, to be able to interact with all the students of the building, and really just, I love the district. And, you know, I'll put it to you this way, I walked out to get some dinner before the meeting, and before I got back into my car, I engaged with two different families who were half the same people I taught. And so, it just sort of been it, you know, because I'm being introduced today in a different role to be a part of the community, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do want to say I'm very excited for you and your new role, you know, having my daughter, who actually switched in at third grade the last week of the year. And I think you were about the third person that she met coming from a private school. And her response was, "I hope I have Mr. Pelizzi when I get to fifth grade." And she didn't have you, but she made a point of always making sure she came across your door or interacted with you. And I know a lot of kids do. So I, I'm excited to see what you do in this role, because I think you very much embody what we as a district are looking for, where the leadership is trending to go towards. So I say congratulations in your new role, but I really feel that the district's really getting a gift, having you as an Assistant Principal.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? No? Okay. And then, Mr., do you have, Mr. Deppi, do you have anything else? I don't want it, you have your school improvement plan, right?
We're on page four, though. Can't wait for that.
Absolutely, right? Let's roll into that.
Again, thank you. And we're going to go through this, because I know you've got a long neck with a lot to do, so we're going to just outline it all and continue so. This is our school and group agenda, so I won't show. So challenges, we're still facing challenges of educating students with some lingering effects of COVID. Things are getting better each year, but we still see that in there. We're working with families to provide a variety of supports as needed to help them. Locating high-quality substitutes has so far been a challenge, but we're working at it and finding more. But I'd like to, on the positive side, the staff is resistant to the challenge. I mean, in an effective way, they're finding ways to keep things going and, you know, working with it. We're expanding, really happy this year. We're expanding from last year, because, you know, we had two co-teaching teams, first grade and third grade. And I know my first grade teachers, Rachel McKillop and Nicole Berry came and presented to you guys. And they're back, and now we have teams at every grade level, so we're looking forward to that. Discussable DEI and SSG building teams. And returning to live family events, which has been phenomenal. Last year was so fun. People were so happy to be back in the building, be together in live, not just the content events, but, you know, tying in with families, the community, the high school, a lot of collaborations, seeing the citizens we're working with. And our events now are taking a different trend. It's old district guys that we, we changed some of our traditional ones from back when some of your kids were young to the fact that they're now opening and more welcoming to families of all kinds, of types, and letting everybody there. So, next. I'm controlling this slide. Oh, thank you. Goal number one, use data resources and evidence-based instructional strategies to afford all students the opportunity to learn in an optimal environment. They're both challenges and supports their learning. So we're going to continue to implement Tier One instructional practice and strategies, maintain schedule progress monitoring, utilize wind blocks at all grade levels to support individual student achievement, provide effective math literacy coaching opportunities, as Mr. Clary mentioned. We're beginning to work now with our staff to do deep dives into that MCA scores, as we're now getting them in to focus instructional needs, looking at where we did really well, some of the subgroups and what we want to do. We understand, you know, we want to work, especially in the Tier One, and, you know, bring that up there, too. Looking for any annual increase in the literacy and math scores as we go along. Next, please.
Goal two, continuing development of our core values program. We want to support a healthy and positive learning environment, which brought your academics and personal growth for all of our students, for the whole community. Continue to effectively grow students' understanding and adherence to our core values and behavioral expectation plans. Collaborate with the equity and parent consultants and coaches in the district. Continue student education in all aspects of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And in addition to that, build the cultural competency of all staff around equity also. Goal three, foster partnerships with stakeholders, including families, faculty members, and members of the community. Develop a true sense of belonging amongst all demographic groups of our school community, promoting the idea and concept of all-in. We need continued work with new students, of which we're getting quite a few of, and families, different welcome initiatives, tours when they come in those days, give them some school paraphernalia and swag. Provide specific focus on our growing Yale population. Our hall flag in the cafeteria has increased. We now have a flag from Sicily, compliments of the superintendent. And it is fun to walk into the cafeteria and have the kids just look up at the flag and get them to question. It really is pretty neat.
That's a scary flag.
I got to get it. Vivian Andoris in Guatemala this year. Those three came in this summer. And again, notice, Mr. Deppi, where's my feeling spike? Okay.
It's wonderful.
I just have to say that Mr. Deppi actually got the flag from Sicily. He did. As soon as he found out that was my heritage, he took care of that.
Look it up. It's a unique flag. It's a unique country.
It might be a little scary for elementary school.
This year's inclusion of the CAPS deaf and hard of hearing program, students and staff as engaging members of our school community. Just say, we've been in school one month, and the absolute fusion of joy that the CAPS community has brought into Page Hilltop has been absolutely fantastic. It has been absolutely delightful and wonderful to welcome. It really has. We want all students and families to have a full sense of belonging. And the strength of our community is built upon the foundational components of family backgrounds, high school collaborations. We've had high school interns coming in, and that's been fantastic. They really bonded with some of the children even early on, and sense of school spirit and the intergenerational connections, and hopefully we can build that even further. And goal number four, develop the classified core SEL competencies in all students to help all students foster healthy development and strong relationships with peers and adults and become self-regulated students. We'll be continuing with second step is our Tier One program in K to five, but we'll also have Tier Two targeted support during wind blocks. Continue with our building level MTSS SEL team, using the research spots that we got for every classroom last year for student self-regulation. We're collaborating with Dane McKendo to effectively implement restorative justice practices. Dane's been in the past two weeks meeting with every, she did all fifth grade classes, now she's doing all fourth grade classes, doing the restorative circle. Help all students develop healthier peer relationships, and our successes can be measured by the decrease in recurring negative behavior amongst all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Fred, in your Yale programs, how many, just ballpark, how many different languages are you dealing with? And what levels of English proficiency do you, because it ranges from like, I don't know, this kid doesn't know colors, to other kids, like, well, he speaks two languages better than anybody here.
The largest population right now, Jim, in the past half dozen years, has been Brazilian Portuguese speaking. But we have Spanish, we have Mandarin, we have some Asian, we have some Indian dialects. We've had in the past Russian, Bulgarian. We had a girl last year from the Ukraine. So this summer, we've picked up a lot on the Spanish with some of the families moving in and out of that, the migrant population are coming in. So, and they're all at different levels. A lot of them are, you know, down at the beginner level, and that's our, we have our Yale teachers, you know, that spend, I consider, a lot of day with them, but also included into the classroom. And then, you know, some of them adapt. They're amazing, though, to watch. I mean, some of the kids, they, they pick it up so quick, they adapt so quick, you know, going in there too. So.
They're going to range from not completely non-English speaking to English proficiency and everywhere in between, really.
Do you see a lot of curiosity between those students and, and students that are just, you know, from here speaking only English?
Not, you know.
Phraseology?
Yeah. To be honest, I'm sure they're curious, you know, see, but, you know, they adapt very well, and they, like I say, between lunchroom and recess discussion, they pick up really quick. We had one girl, you know, came from Russia and not speaking a word. By third grade, she got lost. And she knows she picks up all the stuff. I mean, it's the same as Mike mentioned with the, bringing in the deaf and hard of hearing program. Some of the children have, you know, they have these leaves. They offer supportive sign language, there's interpreters and everything. And again, our kids are loving it as much as they are. They're getting to learn in, you know, in a different way, to get to hear different languages, you know, that, how people learn. And they have people that are teaching our staff and stuff, you know, basic signs, so that, you know, they can communicate with kids in the hallway and stuff.
Awesome. Anybody else?
Yes, as far as, I know you said it's been a struggle to get substitute teachers and, you know, probably teachers in general. Do you have any plan as far as, like, moving forward with the co-teaching model? I know, obviously with co-teachers, that's more substitutes that are needed. So has that been a struggle, like, filling the co-teaching classrooms, or are you able to kind of get other pairs to fill that? How do you guys handle that?
Just for the co-teaching, it was only basically one of the, you know, strike that we had. We were looking for the special ed person to be the co-teacher at a certain grade level. That took us a little time to some of it, but we did find a good qualified person. So they were all building, you know, our, our teachers last spring, when we started with the, the pilot thing, and then, you know, the superintendent and Mr. Clary, you know, said, "We're going to go for it." I didn't have to work hard to find people going to be the co-teachers. They, you know, I went to coach people, and they said, "I'll take it on," you know, and so that part is, we, you know, we're getting better. We're getting, just getting creative, you know, sending out some different things, websites and stuff, to entice people to come sub and promise them school swag and school lunches. I'm sure they care if they come sub for me. So we're getting people to come in.
Could I jump in on that? Because it's, it's interesting, because that is, that really isn't a new problem. It's always been an issue when we have a special education teacher involved, and actually being able to find a sub to do that. What's interesting about co-teaching is, is now when that happens, we have students who are used to being in the regular ed classroom and participate, even if the special education teacher isn't there. In the past, when we were doing pull-out, what would happen is we'd have kids who aren't used to being in that class, now being forced to be in that class without, without a sub, and typically doing non-grade level work. So it's absolutely a problem. I mean, substitutes is, is a problem, I believe nationally, certainly across Massachusetts. But at least now that, when this happens, those students are actually part of that grade level classroom and can participate in that lesson. Whereas in the past, when we were pulling these kids out, they were in that classroom the days there wasn't a sub for the special ed teacher, which was most days that we needed a sub. But now they're, they're not, they're doing the same, slightly modified work as their peers. So it's, though it's still a problem, not a new problem, but this is actually a much, a much better solution for kids, even when they don't, they don't have the sub, which is absolutely a struggle. But I know Mr. Deppi's reached out.
If it's right on the mark, I would challenge anytime, I mean, I know my people, you know, some of them. You could walk in my school in any one of those deep classes, and if you didn't know, then know the people were challenging to tell me, "Who's a genet teacher and who's a spec teacher?" They're both. And who's a spec teacher and who's a genet teacher? They're not different, because they're working together in that cohesive team, and they, they bond up each other, and they take the groove. So it's, you know, you really would have a hard time knowing which one's which.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Thank you so much for your presentation. We appreciate it, and we look forward to seeing you guys in the future.
Thank you so much.
I would make a motion that we approve the Page Hilltop Elementary School Improvement Plan for, presented on October 3rd for the year 2023.
Seconded.
Awesome. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On it, Joyce. I love it.
I do have concussions.
Okay. So we'll do the end of the year for 2022, 2023 progress report with Dr. Runda.
Okay, thank you. So this really hasn't changed much since I presented on the strategic plan. Mrs. Bozek and Mrs. Wilson presented on
Thank you.
co-teaching and the tiered system of social emotional support. But what I have created for you, and this looks slightly different than last year, is really a cheat sheet for you to start the evaluation process for goals. So what this is, is the original goals document that was presented, actually, I did not change that date, my apologies, October 3rd of last year. And with it, what you'll see is the strategic objective, the goal. And the goal on this first sheet is about the creation and implementation of the strategic plan. What you'll notice when you look under the strategic action steps, it's each one of those action steps, and then a, a rating of whether it is complete, ongoing, or incomplete. And the digital version has been updated slightly. You'll notice number five, the begin implementation wasn't rated, but that is, that is considered ongoing. But as of now, for the strategic plan, we, we were able to secure a facilitator and LLC. All administrators, except for the Assistant Principals, participated in the process of creating the strategic plan. And what we did is use the Superintendent Sensory Plan and the Equity Audit as data to drive the process. And we did present this to the school committee, I believe, last May. Below that, you'll see a summary of the presentation and where I feel we are with that plan. And then at the bottom of page two, there are three links that will bring you to some more evidence that you can peruse at your convenience. And then for the second goal, the co-teaching, it's really set up the same way. If you look at the strategic action steps, I go through and kind of give a ranking as to where we feel we are on these. And the co-teaching was actually much, much more difficult, and most of these are ongoing. So, for instance, and I didn't bring my glasses, so please excuse me for holding this so far away from myself. The school administration is supportive and committed to co-teaching, especially regarding co-planning time, scheduling, assistance, and professional development. That is ongoing. I don't know if that will ever be complete. We're always going to have to tweak and adjust the schedules to try to find more co-teaching time for teachers. It certainly isn't perfect the way that it is right now in any of the buildings. It's much better than it has been. But I think if you were to ask anyone if they could use or want more planning time, the answer would absolutely be yes. And I would have to say, I agree. We need to find ways to provide them more time for this common planning. Number two, teachers have not yet, teachers who have not yet will participate in school-wide professional development on co-teaching. That one really is complete, but it should be complete slash ongoing. As we hire new staff, staff retires or moves on to other districts, and we bring other staff in, that training is going to happen, have to happen again. Number three, for the co-teaching, the administration has purchased resources, classroom materials, co-teaching literature, et cetera, to support the teaching and implementation of co-teaching. So that, yes, we had completed that at some point, but that is, again, ongoing. We are going to constantly have to update those resources and supports for teachers. Plans have been developed to, for the dissemination of information on co-teaching to teachers who do not attend the initial training. That actually is completely, we have a plan to catch teachers up who have not, were not able to participate in that. In fact, our consultant, Dr. Decker, has recently changed from University of Florida to the University of Wisconsin? Kansas. Thank you, Mr. Clary.
One of those great Midwesterners.
They're both good schools. They're both good schools. But she was nice enough to allow us to record the last training. So if we have to hire a teacher mid-year, we at least have that recording of the training that the teacher can watch to kind of catch up. There, there really isn't a replacement for being at a live or even a virtual training where you can ask questions in the moment, but it is, it's a good start for when we, we have to hire someone midway through the year. Number five, plans have been developed for regular, I did that one, excuse me. Plans have been developed for evaluating a school's co-teaching program. We have a, that is completely, we have drafted that, where Mr. Clary, Mrs. Bozek, and Mrs. Campione, along with building administration, will do some walkthroughs to look for very specific things happening in co-teaching, including some of the different models, not always the, the, oh, now it's escaping me, to the mutual teaching or the splitting of classroom into, in half, and each taking, taking a half. So we, we will be looking for different models. Our hope is to eventually get teachers involved in some of these walkthroughs, the co-teaching teams, not to necessarily evaluate the program, but to see other models that are working successfully. Number seven, implementation, co-teaching implementation has been incorporated as part of the school improvement plan. You saw, Mr. Deppi did have that as part of, of one of his goals. I would say, some of the success that we're seeing with the lowest twenty-five percent, our lowest performing students, is directly related to some of the things that we're talking about. It is related to the equity work we're doing, certainly. It would absolutely be related to the co-teaching work that we have going on. And then that tiered system of support, which I'll talk about in a moment, is impacting our need of students. And whenever we can impact our need of students in positive ways, whether that's academically or socially, emotionally, mental health-wise, we're going to see better results from kids, which we, we have for that group. There's collaboration between general and special education teachers to ensure all students are succeeding. That is ongoing. Again, we need to find teachers more time. We need to figure out some inventive ways of doing the schedule to get that. It's difficult in the short day that, that a school day is. And with some of the, you know, the, the limited planning time teachers already have to find more time, but we are using some of those early release times and other times that we have traditionally used for district-wide used for district-wide PD. We're gonna try to shift that back, um, to teachers. And teachers have been provided, uh, with mutual planning time for co-teaching. They have been, they absolutely need more. That's why I have that rated as ongoing and incomplete because we have not yet, um, been able to find a model good enough that it is enough time. Again, if you, if you look at the performance on the goal, this is a, a write-up of really explaining what, um, uh, Mrs. Bozek and I had did last year with, with, uh, Lisa Decker. And then there is links at the bottom for additional evidence. Um, the co-teaching share drive is, is full of, uh, information for you to, uh, take a look at. And then the last goal was about our MTSS systems, both academic, um, and social emotional. And we really had started to shift to focus, um, mostly on the social emotional last year. Uh, some of the reasons for, uh, one of the reasons for that is we knew we were switching our elementary reading program. Um, and with it was going to become a, a whole slew of training for our elementary and middle school teachers. Um, so the, the MTSS review and work for academic is incomplete. Uh, the strategic action steps, um, for the social emotional, mental health, uh, we have rated as we do the others. So provide training on MTSS for all staff where the essential practice of each tier one are understood. So that is ongoing. That work has been started. Uh, work with the Director of Special Education, Assistant Superintendent, and the DEI Counseling Director to identify tier two and three interventions for both academic and behavioral mental health. Uh, that is ongoing. We have identified many of those. Uh, we need to continue to refine that and, and find some that are more effective. Uh, identify current supports in tier two and three. Uh, that has been done, but that is an ongoing process to refine those tier two, uh, supports so that students can access grade level curriculum. Uh, four, identify staff that can deliver, um, the identified interventions and provide professional development. So that is complete. We have identified those staff that are able to do that. And identifying track and review data, uh, from supports. So that is ongoing. Uh, we need to refine how we're collecting some of that data. Uh, for instance, some, some of the things that we are now tracking are actually, um, calls to the office. So we want to track every time a teacher is calling for support, what type of support they're calling for, who's the student they're calling for support for, so we, we can start to look at those trends and see if the students that are getting called for are receiving any of these academic or social emotional interventions. And if they are, are they working? My guess is if they're, they're being called to, um, if they're calling, if the teacher's calling the office for assistance consistently for the same student, that intervention isn't working. We need to make a change. So the performance on this goal is also, um, written up, uh, below. Again, this is, uh, mainly a recap of what Ms. Wilson had presented in February, but there is a whole slew of evidence, um, and links of some of the resources that we are using and then some of the examples of the data collection that we're doing. So there's, there's a couple of agendas for you to look at. And I, I wanted to talk about the sample SSG action sheet. When you go on there, all you're going to see is the actual template that we use. Um, we didn't share any, any student information. Um, it's a, it's a pretty simple sheet. It's a student name, grade level, what the issue is, what the action we're gonna try, who is responsible for it, when do we expect it to be done, and if we need to communicate someone to someone, and who's gonna do the communication and who needs to receive the communication. Um, there is a place here for you to, or rank the overall, uh, rating for the goals if you so choose to use that. Um, before I move on to the actual form for the evaluation, are there any questions on, on the progress, NDBA progress report?
Um, just on, on, uh, what you see from our, uh, co-teaching standpoint, do you see any differences in inertia between people who are like, not new to the district, but new to teaching and, and being morphed into co-teaching as opposed to people who've been teachers for 10, 20 years and having to make a change? Do you, do you recognize anything like that? Do you see it at all? And secondly, do you know if the concept is, is being instructed in undergrad and graduate levels?
So the, really all type of inclusion, uh, getting buy-in is typically a little easier with, with people coming right out of, of bachelor degree or master degree programs. Um, it is, it is part of the teacher training. Um, otherwise, besides that, it's really kind of hit or miss how, how much people buy in. It's, it's a, it can be a huge change in practice for people. So there's, there's a mowing process, right? So someone who's been doing something a certain way for, for years and years, we're essentially convincing them and telling them that this isn't the best way to do this for these kids. We want you to do it like this. And that's, that can be a very difficult thing to hear and take. And you start to reflect as an educator and that you're, you're here to work with kids and some of our needy kids, and someone is now telling you, "Hey, what you did for the last 20 years probably maybe wasn't the best way to do it." So that's a, that's a tough message to hear. Typically, what I've seen in the past when I've implemented this in other places, year one is very difficult. And after year one, it isn't. So I, I think we saw that with the people who piloted. And I think what we're living right now is we have a whole slew of new teens that are trying this for the first time and they're, they're finding the, the bumps in the road because there certainly are. And it's difficult to do. And it's a marriage between the classroom teacher and the co-teacher. And sometimes marriages end in divorce, right? So, um, and that, that's true for co-teaching too. So it, certainly, um, we see a difference in the people who are in year two and the people who are struggling at the beginning of year one. But what we'll see is we'll see that the, the kids who are receiving co-teaching, you know, we'll see the results are going to be significantly higher than what they were. And really what, what I do when, when teachers, um, or anyone is kind of doubting, um, why we make that change is we kind of look at the data that we've had, and we have plenty for, we could look back, you know, until the inception, inception of the district to see that we, we really weren't doing a great job with our needy kids and our kids with, uh, our children with disabilities. We were always trying to catch them up from kindergarten and, and the elementary school until fifth grade, and that gap had, had been there. There are certainly some success stories where we were able to make that, uh, some students move. But if you look at the trends, it just wasn't, they were never gonna catch up. Uh, and part of that is if you are, if your expectation is for a student to be somewhere on the proficiency realm and grade level curriculum, and they're never exposed to grade level curriculum, it's not gonna happen. Right? So this is expose students to all the same grade level curriculum at different entry points so that they can access that curriculum. Um, we, that certainly won't be perfected by the end of this year. Uh, this is gonna be a, a model that we're always going to have to, um, continue to work at. We're always gonna have to try to fight and, and find more time for teachers. But I think what we'll see at the end of this year, when this is, um, in, in a way, this is still a pilot year because we have a lot of new teams that haven't done it before. I think we're gonna see the, the hitting the road at the beginning of the school next year is gonna be much easier. Scheduling's gonna be much easier while find more inventive ways to find more time for teachers to co-plan. But this, this first year, um, where we have to allow all of our teachers who are changing their practice that time to kind of grieve the loss of, of what they've done and support them when they're struggling. And there's, there's been some struggles already in all the buildings and that's to be expected. But really, it seems like the staff is, is jumping in with both feet and trying to find solutions to some of the, some of the issues that are popping up.
Very much.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Dr.
Yeah. Go ahead. Um, so I would imagine, um, since this is in the popularity world these days, are we finding applicants have already done co-teaching, have already familiar with it? So they're not like, "Oh," and, um, either they've had training or they have experience in it, or they're just familiar?
Uh, yeah, we have. We've actually were able to hire, um, quite a few teachers who have experience. One that comes to mind is, um, Jen Burke, who is a special education teacher at Page Hilltop, had done co-teaching, I believe, in Lawrence, uh, for years. And, and she really came in with her, um, uh, Mrs. Lynn Oppenheimer, uh, her third grade co-teacher team, they were able to hit the ground running. Um, so that model even last year became polished relatively quickly. But the other thing to remember is, is Lynn is also a former special education teacher who transitioned into a third grade room. So essentially, we have two trained special educators doing co-teaching in a third grade classroom. But I believe Mr. Deppi hired a couple other teachers, um, this year, we started this year, who had, um, training and experience in co-teaching. And this really isn't a new, it's not a new, new thing. Um, it's been happening for, I mean,
Thirty years.
Yeah, for a very, longer than that. And, and really, a lot of the districts around us who have done this have been doing it for, for 20 something, some odd years. So, um, it's, it's a, even in, there were pockets of this happening in the district prior to, to this. Um, but this is the first real push here to, to kind of have this district wide at every grade level.
So while you have it district wide, um, is that 100% at a grade level, 50% at a grade level, 40% at a grade level?
Well, there's a co-teaching team in every grade level, but we, we will probably never be 100% inclusion district. So there are very specific reading programs that children need that you would not do in a co-teaching model. Wilson Reading, for example, is one that we use often. Lawrence Gillingham is another. So for students who need that, they can be pulled out for that instruction, but what, they're probably not gonna be pulled out for math. And they're not gonna be pulled out for social studies. And they're not gonna be pulled out for science, right? So there are kids who absolutely need to get pulled out for some of their services. Speech and occupational therapy is another. Doesn't really make sense to push in and do speech services. Um, sometimes it might if it's the, if it's the, um, social pragmatics part of that. But there will always be some pullout. But what we're trying to do is give, uh, any student who can get their core content in the regular ed classroom with accommodations. That's what we're trying to do. That make sense?
Mm-hmm. Great.
Um, just, uh, tactically, the co-teaching shared drive and the sample agendas and action sheets, if you can adjust the permission so we can see them.
My apologies. I'll take care of that. I did, you do have to, the way that it's set up right now, you have to be logged into your ASRSD email, but I'll, I can change that. So that doesn't have to be the case.
Okay. Anybody else?
And we're happy to print out anything that anybody may need.
Um, just one question I had is for the co-teaching classrooms, are those class sizes larger because they're co-taught? Or are they kind of the same as the rest of the classrooms?
Most, they're, they're similar, uh, if not the same. In most cases, there is, um, kindergarten at Laura White is a little bit smaller. And I believe, I'd have to check. I think at Page, it's a little bit smaller. Um, what we, and we, they start the year a little bit smaller because typically what happens when we have students who move in, a lot of the times, they come with IUPs. And so what would happen is if we have it the same size, we would then be making it even bigger. Well, we know where, where we're going to get students, a lot of students in September and, and October, and then it starts to slow down. But as we get those students in, we wanna be able to grow that and keep, and get it to, to be about the same size.
Yeah.
Um, but we, we have to have, the threshold is, and we try to keep it below this. Um, but we're not below it everywhere. The threshold really is 50%. So, 50% plus one. So we can't have more than 50% of a class be students with disabilities.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so if we have 21 kids in a class, for instance, only 10 of those kids can be students with disabilities.
So if you went over, would you transition other students?
We would have to transition into a, we'd have to transition into another, another section of, of co-teaching. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then just, this is more of a comment. Um, my son is in the second grade co-taught classroom this year. Um, I understand a lot about it because of Tara's presentation, your presentation, and I feel like I have a really good understanding of it. Other parents, I don't think they might have felt that way. Uh, and I will say, I didn't know he was in the classroom until about two weeks into the school year. Um, it's, it's fine. I just, you know, I was told he had this teacher, one teacher, and then a couple weeks in, I found out he was in the co-taught classroom. Then the teachers swapped spots and a lot of things happened. And I understand that, but I think in general, if I was just a parent and I wasn't on the school committee, I wouldn't know what in the world co-teaching was. So maybe if we could just disseminate a little bit of information to other parents so that they have an understanding of what it is and, you know.
I think that's a, that's a very fair point. Um, I, I think that needs to be, it is a district initiative. All the schools are doing it, but, uh, I'm, I'm gonna own that. So one of the things that we wanna start doing is having more parents' nights. Uh, we're going to have our, this is way off topic, my apologies, but Effective School Solutions, who is offering the clinical, uh, clinical support, the high school is going to be offering a parent night. Um, I believe the date has been set towards the end of October.
I'm not sure of the exact date, but October.
It will be towards the end of October on, um, um, Parents Assisting Their Child With Dealing With Stress And Anxiety. Um, I could be off on that title slightly, uh, but they offer a, uh, a whole slew of parent trainings that we're going to take advantage of. But what we could do is piggyback on that, right? So that's an hour presentation. We can certainly do a 25-minute presentation on, on co-teaching and get, give people an overview. Um, and honestly, I don't think we've done enough of that, or I haven't done enough of that. Um, so that, that is, uh, an appreciated reminder to get there.
I think just so parents understand, you know, what it is and don't have a concern, like, "Oh, wait, why is, why is my student in that class?" Just so they fully understand.
Yeah, I think that, that's, that's a very fair, um, request. So we can absolutely make that happen.
Alrighty. Anybody else?
Good?
Hurry. I'm gonna move on to my section.
Can I just, um, you have, so this was,
Oh, thank you.
This was the cheat sheet, right?
Yeah.
So this, this is really for you to fill this out or part of this out, right? So this is the, the superintendent's evaluation form. If you notice that, this is the top sheet and this is kind of the reporting out sheet. Um, but if you go on to page two, um, you'll see that there is a, a, a section for you to give an overall rating and you can add evaluator comments. And then, uh, and I, this is a, this is a DESI form. And I'm, I'm not a, I'm not a huge fan of this form. Yeah, but, but it is, it is what it is, right? So, uh, this gives you a place to, again, rate the, um, the superintendent's goals. Uh, I, we have added what, what focus indicators the goals cover. And then the goal itself is actually pre-populated for you. And if you click on that, it will bring you to this document again so that you can use that if you need it as a reference. And so that is for the, the three goals. And then after the goals, there are, um, performance rating standards for instructional leadership. Um, and there's, uh, 1A through, um, 1F. And then there is standard two, management and operations. Uh, standard three, uh, family and community engagement. Oh. Oh, okay. And standard four, professional culture. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Um, Madam Chair, I don't know if you wanted, if you had a, a time when you wanted this returned to you. So typically how this works is, is, um, the school committee fills out the form, the chair collects and compiles the information, um, and then decides to, uh, when she would put that on the agenda for, uh, public share.
Mm-hmm. Perfect.
Thank you. I'd ask Adam to just kind of encompass everything in his presentation instead of kind of batting it back and forth. So my ask is gonna be, um, Sunday, October 22nd, and I just sent a calendar invite with some notifications on there to our ASRSD accounts. Um, so if I can have the evaluations in so that I'll have the, the week and I'll have it until the 3rd, so it'll end up being like 30 day, in, within 30 days, I would have it and be able to, um, put it on the school agenda the first November meeting that we have. That's the agenda that I would like to have our evaluation report. Is that good for everybody?
That was Sunday, November 3rd.
Sunday, did I put in the calendar invite, November 3rd?
Sunday is November 5th.
So, um, it's supposed to be October 22nd. Sunday, October 22nd is when I would be looking for the submission from you all. And then I'll compile everybody's during that week.
October 22nd?
Yes. Um, but, but, um, Adam,
Thursday.
I'm sorry?
We're gonna set up a break.
Uh, okay. Uh, yeah, so I, I, Adam reviewed the entire portion so that way we all understand what it is. It is, and for those of us that have it electronically, it'll remain in that folder so we can go back to it. And I did reference it in the meeting invite in case you have to go, you know, looking for the folder and for all the information. Um, so that's our plan. And Michelle, are you all set with the, the date or should I still follow up with you?
Yeah, October 22nd.
Yeah.
And then November 1st, which is a Wednesday, will be our first school committee meeting in November.
Perfect. That's what I was trying to say. Thank you. Yes.
I just lost the calendar.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Um, if you are going to fill this out electronically, that is a Google Doc, the, what looks like If you are going to fill this out electronically, that is a Google Doc, the, what looks like a, where did I put it? This document is a Google Doc. If you don't make a copy, you'll be actually writing on the, the master copy, and everyone will be able to see it. If you would like, we can, I can't send it, but I can have Michelle send you each your own copy of this, so you don't have to worry about making a copy.
Okay.
Would you like, yeah?
That would be great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
I can't send it because I have access if I sent it. So thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you for that. Okay, so I'm going to move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay. If I may, we actually have a, I'm backtracking here. We actually have a, a coffee with the cabinet. It used to be superintendent's coffee, but I'm getting everybody involved in it, so, and that's scheduled for October. Sorry, Michelle. No, that is scheduled.
It is scheduled.
It was in the weekly updates, as I saved the date yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
And that was like three years ago, so I don't remember exactly.
It's on Thursday, October 26th, nine thirty.
We're going to try to do those quarterly or, or at least three times a year, but, but four times a year, and I'm including our wonderful assistant superintendent, our sped director, director of student services, our nurse director, and our director of equity and school counseling, for a couple of reasons. Not all the questions are going to be from me, and if the question is from me, the more knowing other might be someone else on cabinet, and we will try to have those at different schools and adjust the time slightly so people, try to make it convenient for people to come. Maybe we can add a virtual option, too.
So October 26th, where?
October 26th, the first one will be at Page Hilltop. And we'll have it in the cultural arts.
Okay.
Okay, superintendent's report. We were asked to provide an update on school choice, where we are this year, and if we need to ask of the school committee to close. So we have accepted a total of twenty students, school choice in over the summer. These are from students in grades kindergarten through nine. We did this via the lottery that was held in August. Laura White and the high school have been closed because the number of seats, the available seats are just gone, as well as grades one, three, four, and five at Page Hilltop, and grade six and eight at the middle school. We are currently in the process of completing state enrollment report, which will have updated enrollment numbers for you, for you at the next meeting, but based on the report, as well as the possible surge in enrollment from our displaced migrant families moving into the shelter in air, we will be requesting the school committee to close school choice for the remainder of the 2023-24 school year. We are very close to our seat, our desired seat numbers now, and we feel that, that we are going to get to that point very quickly. At the next meeting, the two co-presidents of ASRIA, Maryanne Ziman and Brian LaPointe, will complete a presentation with me about parent conferences and parent communication. We specifically are going to talk to you about parent conferences and progress reports. We feel that there is an opportunity to keep one of the very formal parent-teacher conference nights, but change to on-demand conferences that are triggered by student need, both by the school or the parent. So typically what happens now, and I won't get too far into it, but we have about ten minutes, maybe fifteen minutes per conference, and we can't get into a lot of depth, and often the parents that we need to, to attend aren't able to attend the nights that we have it. By having one of those nights and then moving to an on-demand, we can actually have virtual meetings during teacher's prep, we could have before-school meetings if needed, we could have after-school meetings, we could have five or six meetings for one student if needed, rather than what turns out to be not the most effective meetings that we could possibly have. So they're, they're going to come and co-present with me about some of the, the value of, of possibly doing this for both, from grades K through, through twelve, why we would like to do this, and why we feel it will be more, more effective. Much of this has to do with online grade books, parents being able to access, when we work out the rest of the kinks and access a parent portal so that they can see grades in the moment rather than having to wait for a progress report during each trimester. So more information on that to come. I did write a sample letter for the committee to review for, to submit to our local reps about the end of ESSER funding. This is very similar to a letter that I wrote from the superintendent's office. I have reached out to other local superintendents to see if they would like to submit this letter together. There has been a, a positive response. I'm sure they, as you, will have edits to this letter. I'm certainly open to all of those. I am not sensitive about changing graphics, so please review that and let me know if that's something you would be interested in. But the, the, when we talked about this at the last meeting, with ESSER, the ESSER funding coming to an end this year, many of our mental health and social-emotional supports were in ESSER funding, and without an extension or an ESSER, an ESSER four possibly happening, there, there is a chance that we might lose some of these extremely valuable people that we have.
I think the, the letter is exceptionally well-written. The only thing I would, when you, distribution, I'd probably do the governor, or senator, or state rep, and then the federal, the two senators and our representative from the House, and then just, I would also do primary copies because we're doing presentations to, to board this lock, and send them both out, but I, I would not change a thing in the letter.
Okay, thank you.
Just add those and just get them all.
Michelle, did you capture that?
Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
What, we're going to send to all local representatives, governor's office, board of selectmen, state and federal senators, and department, department of Eds, too. Did I capture that, Mr. Quinte?
Yeah.
Yes, Joyce.
Dr. Rinda, do you think it would be effective if school committees would do a similar type thing?
Yes, that is, the, the letter that is submitted in your packet is, is intended to be from school committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I mean, we should maybe work with the association of school committees and see if they can adapt something from all the school committees, and every, we could vote to be on it and have it sent as a major thing.
I understand what you mean, yeah.
I misunderstood. I'd be happy to.
We should be on this, too.
I would be happy to send that out to the, to MASC.
Whatever.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Would you like to vote on this?
If, if, if the committee would, is, is ready to vote on it, sure.
I reviewed it, but did everyone get the chance to review the, the letter? Because if not, then we could always do the vote next, next meeting.
I just read the whole thing.
Right. I was in agreement with Jim as well, so.
I think it's very well-written.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So I, okay. So I will entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we basically accept approve, there's no date on this, but that's all right, concerning the funding for support of student academic and mental things with continuing some of the ESSER funds, grants, funds.
They are grants, yes.
And as a school committee, I would motion that we support along Dr. Rinda as a support for this letter.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
It passes.
Do you want, then want to edit and just have the school committee on here as additional signees?
Support?
Yes.
That was actually going to be the, I saw Michelle's hand up, yes.
Also, I have everyone's electronic signature. If you're fine with me putting your electronic signatures on the letter, we voted it.
Yep, we voted it, so let's do that.
We need this.
Yep, we're all here.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you. And I am going to, so for next steps, I will follow up with Joyce's recommendation to make sure that we take this as far as possible.
Great, thank you. I wanted to provide you an update within Ashobah Valley Inn. We, did I skip? No, I did not. A letter was sent to families on Friday, September 29th, providing them with an update. Currently, we have nine students enrolled. They're, they're, they're arriving on an ongoing basis. So far, they've been, they're absolutely wonderful additions. Most are, have, are attending Page Hilltop or the middle school. I believe the high school has, has two currently, but this, this number will certainly increase. That's it as of now. And then I wanted to provide a high school gym update. We did send home a letter to families September 29th. I did delay that letter from the original, my original intention because we were waiting for additional plans to come in, which they did. So we have received a repair that should be much faster to complete than what was originally intended. We are preparing to go out to bid on that. Mr. Plunkett has an update on that. However, this might be under the $50,000 threshold, so we are going to see if we can get, while we're preparing and waiting to go out to bid, which he can give you the update in a minute, we are preparing to see if that is a possibility. We actually have, I have been, two, two local families who do this work have reached out to me. Another family has reached out to Principal Christie who think they may be of help to us, so we will certainly explore that, and if we could come in, under the program, the program minimum, it would certainly speed up the process.
Awesome.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, Madam Chair, we had structural drawings in hand on Friday, so, and it is for a repair to the gym wall panel system. It will get us occupancy. It's a horizontal C-joist, it's like a stud that will go across the existing panels and be anchored on the existing framework, so those panels will not be able to fall in or out. The engineer, they brought on an architect to do the design, and he feels that the drawings are sufficient for bidding and estimating and getting this under construction. The problem with the, the bid process is a central register. They only publish a couple of times a month, so the 11th was the first one I could get on, so you have to give them two weeks after the 11th, so bids would be due on the 25th if we go through the complete bid process. If we get someone who comes in under the threshold of $50,000, all we need is three quotes from a contractor who does this type of work, and we could move forward, but we should go forward with the bid process because this is what happened to us back in May, when we lost an opportunity to get, get it done then. So if we come in under 50 with, with someone who does this type of work, then that's great, and we get it done faster, and we save a couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Are you all set?
For, for the gym?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just struggling. I did not bring a prayer glasses.
No worries.
I'm struggling to see, my apologies.
Pass these down.
Finish out your floor.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I got a picky.
Thank you, sir.
Better?
Oh, I can see. It's like, it's like a whole new world.
That's Charlie Reed.
At the last meeting, I was about to do that. Mr. Quinte, I believe you inquired of our, our poverty level for each town, so the, the federal poverty rate for air is actually 5.9%. The federal poverty rate for Shirley is 4.2, and the national poverty level is 11.5. Now, this is very different than what you would see on the school and district profiles as our students living in poverty, where the district is at thirty-three, thirty-three and a half percent roughly. So this is everybody who lives in town, the average of, of all.
For our presentation, you might want, just without doing too much taking, just get similar numbers from prior census to show trends, if you're interested.
Yeah. That is a great suggestion. Actually, I was a bit shocked to see these numbers, so looking at the, the prior census would give us an indication. Absolutely forgot.
It also gives them an idea of what communities may be able to bear, these kind of stuck on the way things have always been.
We reached out to both towns, asking that we be placed on an upcoming select board meeting agenda to provide an update on the federal entitlement grants and really the, the ESSER grants and their ending. So the select board meeting agenda, excuse me, so we will be presenting at the following select board meetings in air. We will present Tuesday, November 21st, and in Shirley, we're going to be presenting Monday, October 23rd.
Do you have a timeframe for that? What time they start?
I believe they start at six.
Where we are on the agenda?
I don't know, not yet. I don't think the, the agendas have been made for these meetings yet, but we can, we can share that with the school committee once.
Generally, they start at 6:30, don't they?
I believe they start at 6:30, yes. Typically, if there's residents at these meetings, they, they typically are at the front of the line, and we get pushed back, which I, is appropriate. And that's appropriate. We should, we should wait.
Didn't talk.
I'm going to give you a human resources update. Page Hilltop has hired Ms. Lynn Gogan as the newest member of the grade five team, stepping in from Mr. Polizzi. She will be partnering with Allison Pacello. Lynn has a bachelor's degree from Assumption College, as well as a master's degree from Fitchburg State University. She has over twenty years of teaching experience, most of which is at a fifth-grade level. Lynn is very excited to be joining the Page Hilltop. She actually came to the open house to meet parents, even though she had not officially started yet. We really appreciate that she did that. It's going to take her some time to get on board as she transitions from a, a private school into the district, but we certainly have all the, the experienced educators that we need to assist her with this. So this is an athletic update submitted by Mr. Kendall. I apologize, that is not Mr. Kendall delivering this, but I will do my best. The fall season.
You could record him.
What's that?
You could record him.
You know what? Maybe we'll do that. We'll do that. The fall season is going strong. Most sports have just two weeks left in the regular season. Unified basketball started today. The team will play four games plus a jamboree over the next month. We want to send congratulations to our unified programs in the high school, as Air Shirley Regional High School earned national banner school honors from the Special Olympics to North America. Only 22 schools in Massachusetts earn this recognition, so go Panthers. Boys varsity soccer is 6-3-1 and currently ranked 24th in the state power rankings for Division V. Top 32-plus, anyone over 500 qualifies for the state tournament, so we are in good shape as of now. The boys JV team is unbeaten in Ossinburg Thursday, October 5th at 5:00. Girls varsity soccer is playing well under first-year coach Bill Naylor. The girls are 2-6-1 and rank 30th in the state power rankings. The JV girls are 5-1-1, despite playing with entirely seventh and eighth graders. We've got some, some powerhouse teams coming up. The middle school teams are also playing well. We're able to host games on-site, on the field, built by Bill Woodward in 2020, as it's finally matured. Thanks to Bill, Keith McGun, Linda Cornier, Ray Mallett, and Jeff Thomas for their help getting the field ready to play games on. It saves us a bus to a wild road, to a wild road for home games. That's much appreciated. It's nice for the students to be able to walk right outside onto their field. Girls volleyball currently is 4-5 and ranked 35, 35th in power rankings. JV is having a strong season at 4-2. The team hosts Abby Kelly Wednesday, October 4th at 4 and 5, and Leominster on Friday, October 7th at 4 and 5 for the Dig Pink Nights. All games are in the middle school gym. Varsity golf is 8-0, including a huge win over a strong Hopkington team. They have clinched, they have clinched the spot in sectionals for the fourth straight year. Excuse me. The varsity has been extremely competitive. Senior Tyler Crawford had a hole-in-one last week at Northern Spy, while Soheel Patel, Addie Patel, Reed Onation, Tommy Burgen, Jason Turner, and Maverick Dusty have been outstanding. The team hosts Clinton and Tohonto on Wednesday, October 4th, as they look for a fourth straight league title. JV golf has had some, a number of matches, has been showing improvement. The football team has been playing well despite an 0-4 record. James Gottlett has a strong senior season. The JV team sits at 2-2. The varsity is at Quabin on Friday, October 6th, while the JV hosts Quabin on Monday, October ninth, at eleven. Cheerleading has been great at home games, and they continue to prepare for league competitions this winter. Both cross-country teams are rolling along at four and oh. The boys have been led by Jake, uh, Leone, Cole New, Jack Holden, Johnny McGrath, Ryan Gill, Cole Henley Kletzka, while the girls have been led by Carolyn Mason, Jan Marshall, Marissa Grace, Ada and Devon Purwak, Lily Albelson, and Neve Fallon. The first-year middle school cross-country team has twenty participants under coach Trey Skipper. The team is at Hale Middle School this Thursday, October fifth, before hosting Littleton next Thursday, October twelfth, at the middle school. And that is all for the sports report, and we absolutely are taping Mr., um, Kendall to do that next time.
I don't know if he can get his grin in the face.
And that is all for the superintendent's report.
Okay, so we do not have any ongoing business for the policy review, um, report, there is none, we're supposed to be reviewing the entire draft of policies that we have, so that next school committee meeting, we're gonna be voting in the policies, yes, sir?
I've gone through the fact, I mean, of, of all the policies we're gonna do, I mean, students is by far the most involved, because that's what we do, and I have beaucoup changes, thoughts, that just, I mean, across the board, they're not just, there are some I had, but mostly, there are things that, um, probably would require a review of the entire committee to decide what particular portions to go, so I don't, I don't see, I don't know what next meeting will look like, it seems like it would take a, an extended period of time to go through, just check. I mean, the other policies are, are relatively simple, but J is basically why we're here as a school, to deal with all the movements.
Okay, um, so what we can do is, if I can coordinate with you, get your suggested edits, then I can put them in the folder for us to kind of prepare and review, in it, before we have the next meeting, so that, that way, if we are able to address some of those things, we could do that. Cause I mean, if there are sections that we know we'll go through, we all approve, and let's say we need to work on J, if we all see the edits ahead of time, it might go a little bit smoother, um, so I could do that and coordinate that with you. Okay. Anybody else?
Um, I have some for section D, just some of those, um, threshold changes, like in the finance one, do you want me to do the same thing?
Yeah.
Or just send it to you to put?
Yeah, and, and we'll put it in there, just so that way we all can review it, we'll, we'll be as prepared as we can be. Um, so that's great, so, do you remember what section that is?
Yeah, section D.
Okay.
Um, a couple, like written, different pages in there, so I can just send you all that.
Yeah, okay. And, she, a student, okay. So I'll make sure I circle back, and Michelle, circle back with you. Yes, ma'am?
Um, I don't believe that the whole committee has seen a redline version of section I, which is instructional program, I believe. So I reached out to Dorothy Prosser last week, but she's on vacation till October thirteenth.
Okay.
I don't know if she maybe sent something to you or Chris, I didn't see any email of section I. It was on an agenda for a summer meeting, but in the, the other sections, she had sent, she may have just, cause there was, there was, there was a lot of review over the summer, so it's possible that she just, you know, it was an oversight.
Okay. Um, let's see, yes, Joyce?
Do we have an anticipation of the time allowance that we need for that, for that review, and if it's extensive, should it be in a separate individual meeting that doesn't contain any other business?
Ooh, that's a good idea. I think if it's, based upon the feedback that I'm getting now, maybe we should make it a separate meeting.
I mean, we can.
We can, so maybe we should.
So you take out superintendent stuff and minutes and stuff, and you just do a policy review?
Policy review.
Oh, it's a public meeting, but just policy review, and then you don't go till midnight, where no one can think.
Right, so I think that that's an excellent suggestion, yes, sir.
Just, just a heads up, in the next meeting, there will be three school improvement plan presentations.
That's right, so how about this, I will coordinate, um, with you all, so I'll, you know, send the email to myself, and then blind copy you all with suggested dates for, um, a policy review, and then we'll just review all of the policies separately. Then that way, you're right, we don't have to have an extended period, and we'll be able to focus on the school improvement plans.
You're focusing on just that.
Yes, absolutely.
And, um, I think it just comes out clear, cause you're not so tired and thinking of five thousand other things.
Yeah.
I assume that probably we could have the schools anytime, we probably need them, they're not overscheduled, Mr. Plunkett.
Um, yeah.
Is there any limitation on that?
I think we can find you a spot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so I will send out, um, something, if not tonight, then tomorrow morning, just to check with everybody and their schedule, so that we can get the policy review completed, um, which takes a load off. Okay, thank you for that suggestion, Joyce. Um, other than that, so I'm gonna move on to chairperson's notes, which I don't have any, cause I was more focused on our policy review coming up, so I feel a little bit better, so we'll have at least a two-week extension, um, to review the policies further, and then give voice to the, the suggested changes that we have coming, um, so that is beneficial. Um, are there any other topics for discussion not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting? Uh, I don't have any, everybody good? Yay! Um, communications?
Yep. Uh, announcements for October third, twenty-twenty-three. Um, on Thursday, October fifth, the college MIFA informational night will be at six-thirty in the high school LGI room. On Thursday, October fifth, Page Hilltop PTO meeting, six-thirty, Page Hilltop Cultural Arts Center. On Saturday, October seventh, Air Shirley High School Homecoming Dance, seven o'clock in the high school. On Wednesday, October eleventh, a ninety-minute early release for grades preschool through twelve, professional development for teachers. Lunch will be served, dismissal times for high school, middle school at twelve-fifteen PM, in law and Page Hilltop at one forty-five PM. Wednesday, October eleventh, Air Shirley Education Foundation meeting at seven o'clock in the high school media center. On Wednesday, October eighteenth, school committee meeting, six-thirty, the middle school library. On Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, a ninety-minute early release for grades preschool through twelve, professional development for teachers. Lunch will be served, dismissal times, high school, middle school at twelve-fifteen PM, law and Page Hilltop at one forty-five PM. Thursday, October twenty-sixth, ninety-minute early release for grades six to eight, or parent guardian conferences, lunch will be served, dismissal time is at twelve-fifteen PM. And Friday, October twenty-seven, ninety-minute early release for grades six to eight, for parent guardian conferences, lunch will be served, dismissal time is twelve-fifteen PM. That is it.
Thank you. Okay, so we do have executive session, I swear I read Robert's rules when we have this, but it is sweeping me, so we are supposed to adjourn?
Adjourn, to go into executive session, you will only return to adjourn your meetings and not conduct any other meetings. Hold on, business, you have your meeting.
Yes, thank you so much, Joyce, I appreciate that, so we don't need to note the time now, do we? Or we do adjourn? Okay, thank you.
Yes, cause you know, you took out the time.
I'd make a motion that we adjourn the regular session at eight-thirteen, in order to enter executive session.
With a five-minute recess.
With a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
All right, seconded by Ashley, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, adjourn regular session.